Well, we even need to vote, I think we have.
The motion should be without one.
Got to hear a motion to approve. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, I don't know that I have any correspondence or announcements other than... I don't think we have anything.
I think there are two items that I mentioned in my notes, Michael, that the board's probably aware of. One is obviously your situation as acting CEO.
Yeah.
The board's not aware of that, which just should be noted for the record. And then secondly, that there is this discussion occurring of continuing town-village collaboration on training sessions in the future on locally significant issues as opposed to, you know, those general sessions that are put on by the county federation or whatever.
Or BOS or whatever.
Unfortunately, I was not able to attend, but I understand there was tremendously positive feedback on historic reservations that...
Yeah, I learned a lot and we had a very good experience with the, all the equipment for it breaking down and it took about two hours for a number of people working together, including my lovely wife, getting it working for us. So, we may want to think about a little upgrade in some of our equipment that we have here at Town Hall for, you know...
How did they present it?
It was done off a laptop with a projector, which took a long time to get them to speak to each other and get it to work. Finally, it worked beautifully through the presentation, but it was a number of hours in the making.
Michael, I have some recent experience in procuring such equipment, so if you want to talk to me about that.
That would be, that would be very helpful, Eric, thank you.
We're doing it now, down at the town park.
Okay.
We have a projector available to us, the town does.
Okay.
I thought you used the one from the, from the library.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They have two.
Oh.
Well, I think we've got to get to the point where we have electronics submission and a screen up here, so we don't have this...
Yeah, this is a very...
Large paper.
Too small for most people to see.
Is that what you showed it on?
No, no, actually, no, actually, we were downstairs. I didn't realize that court night had moved to Wednesday, so court night was Wednesday. And then I went over to Village Hall saying, "Well, of course, we can do it here." Well, no, because their court night was Wednesday, so we ended up downstairs with about 20 people.
But it wasn't the laptop, we had to borrow the laptop from the village.
Right, the village loaned the laptop.
You know, they give free projectors away on your new phone, dude. You can just sit it on the counter and say, "Okay, let's start, everyone."
Well, you see, we need to, we need to upgrade.
What's wrong with stone tablets?
Uh, there's a, there's a lot of debris and you could lose an eye if, you know, the chips fly, so, but it went very well. And I think the idea, working with the village, they're very enthusiastic about working with us on the training sessions, and I think that way we can really hone in on what we need in Rhinebeck rather than things which tend to be more generic. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to that.
Can we talk for another minute?
Another minute, okay. Everyone seen the Christmas lights up? I know the stations are going to all Christmas music. I think it's a little early, I haven't had my turkey yet.
Yeah, right.
So...
Yankees have a manager now.
We do?
No.
Oh, we don't?
Yankees don't have a manager.
No, they don't have a manager, no.
We don't have a working one.
What?
We have one.
Oh, yes. We've been working on a number of ministerial changes to the zoning law to clean things up, so that we don't have so much problems for people going through the process and whatnot. If anybody has any thoughts, they should share them with us. Art's been working on it, helping to put it all together, and I can, if anyone's interested, I can get you a, you know, copy of some of the ideas we've had already that we're working on or putting together.
That'd be good, because I don't want to be proposing things that you've already...
Yeah, I take it, hopefully, we're covering those points, those simple points that have come up in meetings here, including things like lot consolidation and the role of sketch plan conferences and all kinds of little things and...
And generators and all that sort of thing.
And distinguishing between what should or should not be considered an accessory structure, you know, cleaning up some definitions, making clear that, you know, repair and maintenance extends a little farther than some interpretations have gone in the past.
That you need a building permit, but you don't need the planning board, for example. So, that's what we're trying to do. Another 20 seconds?
Will it include anything in Rhinebeck?
Yes, it will. Yes, it will.
Yes.
It'll include all zoning districts, including overlay districts, so yes, it absolutely will.
Yeah, repair and...
You're gonna make it harder.
I don't think that's possible.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for doing this.
No changes, anything in Rhinebeck.
Get three more attorneys involved.
It's a challenge.
It can become more complicated.
Well, with that in mind, we'll go to our first public hearing. LXMI Property Holdings LLC, 18 Hagerty Hill Road, special use permit and site plan approval, continuation from July 17th, 2017, as deferred at applicant's request through October 16th, 2017, of combined public hearing on the reapplications of LXMI Property Holdings for special use permit, site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of the proposed construction of a five-bedroom dwelling, installation of related site improvements, and establishment of a one-bedroom detached accessory dwelling on a 15-acre parcel at 18 Hagerty Hill Road within the rural countryside RSE 5 district, being the subject of prior Dutchess County Health Department approval and classified as an unlisted action under seeker. And who's...
Is it fair to say that you should mention that Edna stepped away?
Yes, Edna has recused herself for the record.
I see her sitting back there with my glasses on. Thank you, Edna.
So I'll just reintroduce myself. My name is Darren Davidowich, and I'm with the Art of Building, so I am the contractor on the project. And also here tonight, we have Mark Reminsky, who's the engineer on the project, who worked on both the site plan aspects and the county health department approval. And we have Naveen Chawla, who is, along with his wife and his daughters, LXMI Property Holdings, the owners of the parcel, currently the occupants of one of the structures on the parcel. And we have Victoria Palladoro, who's legal counsel on the project. So, just to take you quickly through the plan, which is pretty much the same thing we've seen a number of times, originally back in 2012, when the seller to the Chawlas, Kate DeChard, originally had it approved and subdivided off of a much larger lot, which has frontage along Route 9. And Kate's intention was to prepare a land plan that could be used to sell the property, and then someone could come along and build that plan. We came back in 2014 and made some changes to that plan. The changes we proposed at that time were the addition of a second structure, which is a detached accessory dwelling, which has since been constructed. And we modified the size of the septic system at that time, because there was going to be two structures on the property, the main dwelling and the detached accessory dwelling. So we proposed the expansion and did receive approval from both the planning board and the county on the expansion of the septic system and the addition of the second structure to the site. So, just quickly in terms of layout, because it's been a while, and the property fronts on Hagerty Hill Road, it is a flag lot. The property is 15 acres in size, and the driveway runs basically from the flag portion of the lot out to Hagerty Hill Road and has provision for turnout of emergency vehicles, something that comes up often with the planning board on driveways of this length. So we do have provision for, to turnouts for emergency vehicles. And as you enter the site, you get to basically a circular portion of the driveway. Furthest back is the existing detached accessory dwelling, which was approved back in 2014, when we came in and constructed in 2015 and issued a CO in 2016. The 900 detached, 900 square foot detached accessory dwelling is where the Chawlas are currently living, while we work to get their home constructed, which is why we're here tonight, because that approval, there were some issues, technical issues, in terms of the signing of the map, so we're back here to get that reapproved, if you will, and this is a continuation of a prior series of public hearings with respect to that. This land plan is largely the same plan that we've seen, with the exception of Kate DeChard's. For the past few years, the dwelling is here and has been constructed, and the home is a not-quite-4,000-square-foot home. The footprint of that home is, has been modified just slightly as we've tweaked the architecture in the years that have ensued since that original approval, but the home is in the same space, and the plan is to build, I say not-quite-a-4,000-square-foot home, because there's a deed restriction that affects this parcel, and it limits us to a 4,000-square-foot max, so the intention is to stay below that square footage limitation.
Is the deed restriction for 4,000 feet, all the structures, livable structures on the property, or one primary structure?
One primary structure, so...
Okay.
Yeah, this would meet the deed restriction requirements. And then the septic, so I should talk about some of the things that are in place now. So, having received that prior approval, we constructed the detached accessory dwelling. We also constructed the entire driveway into the site, and that includes the utility infrastructure out to the road. Quite a good amount of expense was incurred to bring underground electrical service in from the road, as well as data services. And we've also put in provision for a backup generator. We've built the septic system, which is now in operation to serve the cottage, and we've put in other aspects of the septic system and utility infrastructure, underground utility infrastructure, right to the building envelope of the main house. We've also installed the two propane tanks that would serve for heating fuel, cooking fuel, and fuel for the generator, the backup generator. So quite a bit has been done under that prior approval to essentially vest, vest this site plan. And we're here tonight just to, to sort of reapprove this plan with respect to the zoning code. The plan does conform in all ways to the zoning code, which is RC 5 zone. We fit everything and always have into the building envelope, which is about 3/4 of an acre in size on this 15-acre parcel. There's 11 acres of wetlands on this site, so we're really limited to this building envelope and have done the job of getting everything that we need to in there, and that hasn't changed since the prior versions of the plan. That's pretty much all the background I can give.
Questions for members of the planning board?
Well, as I recall, this was held up because there was a accessory building before there was a primary building, and what's become of that issue?
We had that looked into. As I recall, we talked to both Art and John Lyons about that, and since we, the town, it wasn't me, I wasn't here at the time, since the planning board had approved the overall master plan, including the main building and the accessory structure and all of the other site plan improvements, it was felt that it is not a problem that the accessory dwelling was built first, since the entire plan had already been approved. It wasn't just the accessory building approved and nothing else had been approved to then be done later. It had all been approved as one overall master plan, and that, that facet of it did happen to happen first.
So that was, that was not an issue?
Apparently, I was told it is not an issue.
It wasn't an issue, because we decided if, by chance, something fell through and we had a secondary structure, that would become the primary structure on the property, and then we would...
Exactly.
Okay. And also, there was an issue about satisfying the, their own covenants on this. Were you all involved in that process?
We're not involved in that, because they were not part of the original subdivision, conditions of subdivision or approval, so therefore they're, that's something that's not on our plate. It's between the different members or the different people or signatories to those deed restrictions, and, but they're not part of the subdivision, therefore there's nothing, the town has no approval or enforcement authority over those.
Related to that, that particular point, the applicant and the applicant's counsel has either twice or thrice requested that this continuation of public hearing be delayed so that they might resolve the differences of opinion or that, that those particular issues with the, the other participating parties to those restrictions. Whether or not that has occurred is, you know, is, we, we don't know. But again, those, that's a matter between the, as counsel has advised, it's a matter between the parties and not a matter for the planning board.
It's all in good, it's working.
Go forward, Sharon.
Hi, Victoria Palladoro. So first off, I haven't been before you in a very long time. I usually draw straws with George Rodenhause, and I always get the small one, so happy to be here tonight and not 40 minutes away.
And it was a pleasure to be your assistant, your new assistant.
So as far as the neighbors, you know that there is a private deed restriction. We, we've taken those few months since we were last before the board to refine the plans, refine the elevations, provide them with additional information, because they, they stated that they did not feel they understood what was being proposed. So at this point, we still don't have a consensus, but my client feels that we're at a point where at least the footprint and the site plan are, are going to stay the same, and if it's a matter of tweaking architectural elevations, that's something that can be done outside of this forum, without having to come back for any kind of site plan reapproval.
Why, why during this process, if there are deed restrictions, private, public, why aren't we aware of those during the whole process?
So you are, you are aware of them, and actually, if you look on your plans, we've shown the whole deed restriction setback around the whole, around the whole property.
How come there were setbacks? I mean, that's what this all is, about the max square footage and setback?
It's, it's max square footage setback, and then the neighbors to the south do have some review approval over the exterior look of the property, of the structure. And, you know, that's not something that's before the planning board, so...
This is the house that's all the way up on the road, with the pond in the back of the property, where they have...
Right, they have, that's one of the neighbors. There's three lots with two different owners.
Okay.
And this, this lot, the one, the subject lot, won't actually be visible from the road.
Right, it's visible for these people.
Well, arguably, I don't know how to pronounce their last name, is it Abate or Abate? Abate, the Abates and the Wilkenfels.
Okay.
And the issue of the driveway taking up the buffer zone that's supposed to be unplanted, is that no longer an issue?
That's not an issue.
Oh, okay.
The, the covenant, I have a copy if I, you want me to read it to you, but the covenant allows utilities and other items within the deed restriction setback, just not structures.
So a driveway is a utility, then?
Right, well, I mean, the driveway also serves the other properties, so...
Oh, I see, okay.
Actually, Victoria, the elevations are part of the site plan approval process for the planning board.
Are they?
Yeah, they are. So it's, I mean, we can still go ahead with what you presented to us, and we can improve it, but if you were with the different, with the neighbors to come to some changes, it is conceivable you would have to come back to amend, amend the site plan on that.
You know, at this point, that's a risk we're willing to take.
Okay.
Just because we've been at this for so long and...
Well, the carport is back on.
You're considering the application.
Okay.
You're considering the application then to consist, from a building elevation standpoint, to be based upon the elevations that were previously submitted to this board prior to July.
Yeah, I can give you a little bit better...
So I believe Darren made a revised submission prior to this meeting?
No, well, the revised submission was simply the site plan.
Yeah.
Well, but we have options, if I recall. They were going to remove a basement door and no longer make that an entrance and be able to pick up the grade a little bit, so that, that was out there.
Well, the carport is back.
The carport is not back.
Yes.
So, so this is the most recent interpretation, so we can base it in a...
Well, we'll talk about the carport, does that get come up?
No, this is, these are...
So there is a carport on what we'll call the left side of the house, or the roadside of the house, if you will, and that was considered to be, we were thinking about removing that at one point, because there was question whether it would require a variance, because it would be an accessory structure, therefore not allowed in the front yard, because we have a flag yard, that, flag lot, that would be the front yard. But John Lyons and his mother's weighed in, and it's been deemed that the carport isn't an accessory structure, so therefore is allowed to be where we had originally shown it, so we decided not to remove it from the plan. We actually never got as far as removing the carport.
So this, what you just gave us, which is dated 10/2017?
Never been publicly presented.
Never been publicly...
That's not been publicly, we put that exhibit together, it's just a better, detailed, more colorful version of the...
Should be presented then, and at this point in time, and, and request it to be considered part of the application.
Presented at this point in time.
Yeah, because it doesn't, it doesn't exist at this point in time as part of the planning board record of this case. Our elevation, the elevation here is the one that was submitted prior to July.
Okay.
So is this an interpretation of what was presented in July, and that the carport is still there? How different is it?
They, it's, it's the same structure. All we did was change the materials a bit, because the deed restriction calls for the home to be in keeping with the, the traditional aspects of Rhinebeck.
So there's a cosmetic changes?
These are...
The material were changed to natural materials.
Right.
So we have everything we need to move forward?
Cement siding to wood siding.
Exactly.
When, when were these deed restrictions put in place? Just round numbers, just a date, what year? I'm just curious, when they say with the traditions of Rhinebeck, what traditions and what period of...
Well, it says traditional...
Traditions within the surrounding area, structure.
They're basically talking about, like, natural materials, you know, traditional building materials, that type of thing, but I can tell you the date.
Are they in the design standards?
There you go, 1997.
97.
Are they in the design standard?
For the town?
I think they're design suggestions, I don't think they're, we don't have a formal list.
Actually, we do.
We do have designs.
So I can't use aluminum siding? I'm not aware of any dire restrictions, it's a suggested design, and we're, they're kind of subject to our review, but, but it sounds like they're doing what we want anyway.
Right, we're not, we're not doing aluminum siding.
I think they do terrible work, man.
The materials were changed to more natural materials, and the language, and again, this is not, this is just for your reference, it says, for compatibility and harmony with the existing character of the land. So it's something that's not supposed to...
Boy, that's mush words.
Right, so it has to do with the natural setting of the land and not being totally out of character with the rural nature of Rhinebeck. They're not, they're not specific standards that have to be met.
It's, we do have, it's, under the site plan design criteria, Section 125-76 is sort of a list of guidelines for the planning board to consider when looking at elevations and special use permit and site plan are being looked at.
They list the materials?
Basically, what it's talking about is, let me see here, relationship to the town comprehensive plan, given to goals, objectives, stated general land use policies, scenic and/or historic districts, then it goes into relationship with buildings to site, parking, which leads to site adjoining areas, landscape offering, treatment, lighting, building design, design, make appropriate recognition of compatible building forms indigenous to the community and in particular of historic character, materials should have good architectural character and should be selected for traditional building materials, except in wholly impractical, natural materials shall be used. So yeah, it's, it's here.
Well, but it's very...
It says wherever practically.
Very objective, so it's very, if, natural materials, where they should be used, so it's, why, why should this be a concern right now?
Just because it's in the zoning law, and we did have a presentation before, and there have been some changes, just to make sure that what we are potentially going to approve is what the up-to-date means that we've seen it, and that it's just the up-to-date submission from the applicant.
And to be clear, this is the plan that was given to the neighbors as part of the deed restriction review, and the only changes made to these elevations were to go more in that direction, so we added more natural materials, and there's a lot more cedar siding on the building.
So basically, that's what we are now to take as meeting the design goals, the standards, whatever we're supposed to look at for the site plan approval, which is fine.
Exactly, and maybe the best...
Do you want, do you want Darren to walk you through the materials?
Just a, the question, and Darren, obviously, we need to take another look at it, but the, you're confirming that the October, the November 16th site plan, which sets forth the building footprint, conforms with the October 20th elevation of the building?
Correct.
Right, and these were served on the neighbors' personal service, so we know that they did receive copies, had it for over 30 days.
Well, we're happy for them, but basically, we're just concerned about what you've, you know, given us, because what...
The footprint has not changed.
Yeah, okay. It seems the architecture is similar, it's just materials, things of that sort, which you're changing. Yes?
Just looking at the overall parcel map, she might be marking it to this, is it within 500 feet of Route 9?
Other questions from the members of the planning board at the moment? Members of the public? Any comment questions?
Hi, my name is Aaron Wilkenfeld. I live at 12 Hagerty Hill Road. My wife Margot spoke to you guys in July at the meeting regarding this application. We are next-door neighbors to LXMI Property and part of the same subdivision. As you know, there are deed restrictions, as we've all been discussing, that run with our lands. Lots 1B and 1C are ours, and Joseph Abate is right next door on Lot 1A, and LXMI is Lot 2. If you look at the deed restrictions, you'll see them quite straightforward. Despite being fully aware of these deed restrictions, LXMI, as far as we can tell, seem to be, from the beginning, trying to circumnavigate many of these covenants. The deed restrictions limit the size and number of stories and architectural design of any structure built on their property. They also give all of Lot 1 owners, that is Joseph Abate, Margot, and myself, the right to review and approve any plans. The original plans submitted by LXMI earlier this year violated the size, number of stories and architectural design requirements of the deed restrictions. As a result of our objections, the public hearing at the July 17 meeting was held over to the next meeting. LXMI then asked for further postponements in August 21st, September 18th, October 16th meetings. Per LXMI's lawyer, this was to allow the applicant time to resolve plan issues with the neighbors. However, despite our best efforts to outline our concerns and to invite the submission of complete and compliant siding and design plans, communication from LXMI has been almost non-existent. In fact, it took until October 25th for LXMI to deliver plans that were even less complete and still very obviously non-compliant in a couple of ways. Although I have heard that there are going to be more plans coming, we have requested more clear plans, because there have been statements made about the size of the house and that sort of thing, but we can no longer verify that, because the plans, as you saw, that, that little tiny thing that is completely not to scale. Let's see. The exterior design does not meet the requirement that the structure be of colonial traditional design, and the extent of the sizing and infringements cannot be ascertained, because the plans lack those measurements in scale. To date, our request for complete set of plans has not been granted, so they talked about the 30-day review, we, before the end of that, we requested further information to be able to actually make judgments on what was being claimed, and we have not received that. In addition, LXMI continues to insist that they may deny our right to review the plans. In that letter, they also stated that they may, may not decide to deny our rights to review their plans based on a purported approval given by Mr. Gossett, the previous owner of our property, despite Mr. Gossett providing an affidavit to the contrary. This may force us into litigation to protect our rights and the character of the neighborhood. Finally, the accessory dwelling already built does not have approval from the Abates or us, and might not meet the requirements of the zoning law that its size be limited to 900 square feet. We respectfully ask the planning board to deny their permit for an accessory dwelling until all aspects of the deed restrictions and zoning law are complied with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening, Wayne Thompson, I'm attorney for Wilkenfeld's and Abates. I'm going to be real, real short.
Thank you.
Just kidding.
I was afraid so.
There are two issues that, that are in my mind, first and foremost. One is the deed restrictions, and I understand it's not the purview of the planning board to mediate disputes between neighbors. However, what we have here is the concern of conferring additional rights to property owners when they take subject to certain deed restrictions, when they buy the property. We're not asking the planning board to mediate the dispute, we're asking the planning board to have the applicant certify as part of the site plan approval that all the deed restrictions have been complied with, and that, that the neighbors' rights outside of the planning board as a condition of site plan approval, that everything is done. I've watched, in the meetings I've attended, the planning board do this with various conservation easements and, and other easements. You wouldn't approve, give site plan approval till you had compliance with, with conservation easements, that whatever building was done was going to be proper. This is to protect the, the interests of, of the town and the neighbors at whole, not to mediate any disputes, but just to assure to the current property owners and to future property owners that whatever property rights were instilled and are of record notice, that those property rights, through a site plan approval, are conferred upon the, the site plan in a meaningful way, so that there's not a whole... that there's not a whole massive litigation, Article 78 litigation going through that involves the town and kind of muckies up everything for everybody. This is real simple saying, hey, at the time that this site plan was approved, I, the applicant, certify that all of the deed restrictions have been complied with. Real simple, real easy. It serves the best interests of the neighbors, best interests of the planning board, and the best interests of the town and any future property owners, that these restrictions have meaning. Because otherwise, why bother filing, drafting and filing them with the county clerk if they have no meaning to anybody and you're left holding a piece of worthless paper? So we're on record notice that it's to be, should be adhered to. And we ask the planning board to consider that one relatively simple request.
Relatively simple puts me in the position of being liable for requesting that information. So it's not relatively simple. It's taking me and putting me into a situation where I get to sit back-
And if there was a, and if there was a neat conservation easement, I watched the planning board do this in June and July.
I asked earlier-
Richard, that's a discussion that we can have amongst ourselves.
I asked earlier if we received a copy of the deed restrictions that was covered. Have we?
Yes, we had them quite a few months ago. We did have it.
Back in June.
Yeah. But Richard, this is a discussion we need to have amongst ourselves. It's a legitimate discussion, but it's amongst us.
Okay, this is a conversation that should be presented to the town board.
That as well, but at this point, we just have to allow Mr. Thompson to, you know, have his say.
And I'm not asking for anything the board hasn't done before. The other technical issue that we've had here is, and I understand now from your discussions tonight, so the point is somewhat, but we have a secondary residence being constructed before a primary residence that was approved. The technical issue is that was it approved as there are primary residents? And I still have that question. And the problem that I have with a secondary residence being constructed before a primary residence is something could happen and a primary residence may never be built.
As I stated early, we just addressed that, right? The secondary residence becomes the primary residence and everybody was-
At what point does that happen?
Well, that's something that we will discuss amongst ourselves. We have talked to our attorneys about this, exactly what the impact would be with that accessory structure having been built prior to the primary structure. So it is something we have reviewed with our attorneys and I think as Richard was just saying, we have been given the legal counsel that since a master plan was indeed approved, approving both the primary structure and the accessory structure and all the other site improvements, the driveway, everything else, that it is not a problem in view of who we had, our legal counsel is not a problem that the accessory structure happened to be built first because it was part of an overall approved master plan from the planning board. And it was therefore intended to be only an accessory structure, it was not intended to be a primary structure.
I understand that and I raise the issue just because at what point, I'm asking, not asking for an answer at this point, just raising the question, what point in time does it become a primary structure?
Well, time will tell.
And, you know, and that, that's my two readers digest condensed version. The other, to clarify with one thing, just because I feel that applicant hasn't been quite as forthcoming as to the deed restriction, as to the traditional, it's the deed restriction states traditional or colonial design in its reference. So to me, that's, when you say colonial, that's got some very specific architectural features that are associated with colonial design. Someone had mentioned this kind of mushy words and yeah, I agree lawyers like mushy words, but traditional colonial design is not mushy, it's rather, just go to Home Depot to the paint section and pick up a paint booklet and it's pretty, pretty clear what a colonial design is. And again, thank you for your time. The biggest thing that I have is, as you would with an easement, that the applicant certifies that the deed restrictions have been complied with.
Thank you.
Thank you very kindly.
Michael, I have a question in that regard.
Yes.
I mean, if we're to carry forth every deed restriction amongst, you know, a small subdivision, and we don't know the process by which those deed restrictions are upheld. I mean, we could get a set of neighbors bullying another neighbor into doing something that is not part of their restriction, but they say it is and therefore they uphold their going forward. And if we're then brought into that process to help them bully this particular tenant, I'm not saying that's what's happening in this regard, but I mean, we could get into a situation like that.
We could.
In which case, we're then, you know, circumventing this person's rights.
There's no legal basis for the town planning board to be involved in deed restrictions, which were not part of a subdivision approved by the planning board or a special use permit or site plan approved by the planning board with the conditions that we placed upon that approval.
So those restrictions have no bearing at all on our proceedings?
Things we can take into consideration, we'd like to as we look at something, but no, we are not in a position to legally enforce them or to in any way, shape, or form be the arbiter of whether or not they need to be adhered to for our approvals.
Are we not in a position to enforce a deed restriction if it specifies and they can't have a house over 4,000 square feet?
No, we can't do it because-
So while we're sitting here reviewing knowingly, there's a restriction that says 4,000 square feet is the limit, we can't say, well, wait a minute, this is 5,000 square feet?
Correct. We can't as the planning board, no, because it's not part of any approval that the town was involved in bringing about, that the planning board was involved in bringing about. It was, if the subdivision was made and one of the conditions are there will be no house in this subdivision more than 4,000-
Is it entirely up to the neighbors to find themselves?
Correct.
So we could have this coming back to us again because they haven't worked things out, but then they come back, how about this plan? And we approved that.
That's absolutely right.
And they come back again and come back again.
That's absolutely right. That's absolutely right.
That doesn't sound like a good process.
Well, they're willing to take that chance. Victoria, I think is going to-
It's not a great process, but it's a risk, but we're willing to take it just because we need to move this forward at this point. Just to clarify some of the things that were brought up, the neighbors do have the same set of plans. They're just looking for more detailed construction plans. So they have the same thing that the planning board has. So to say that we haven't been forthright is, you know, we take issue with that. So it's also, it's also true that the planning board cannot get involved at all in a private restrictive covenant. So we've shown the buffer on this plan just to show that we're complying with it and so that future people that go to purchase this property can see that there's a restrictive covenant and they can do their diligence. But it's really outside of the planning board's purview to consider the private covenants. And this is different from a conservation easement that you've required as part of subdivision approval, where you've had input into what the restriction should be and, you know, how it's going to be enforced in the future. This is, this is a different animal than something required as part of your planning board process. This was completely private between neighbors, between friendly neighbors at the time. And, you know, that's how these things happen. I also just want to point out that this plan was approved back in 2012 and there haven't been any material changes in the neighborhood, in the community, or to the plan itself. And because they've already spent so much money and done so much of the construction of the infrastructure, serving both parcels, we believe they have vested rights and that it would be arbitrary and capricious for the planning board not to reapprove the plan at this point, just because there haven't been any changes that would warrant a change in the planning board's decision.
Have the same neighbors owned the adjoining properties?
So no, actually, the Wilkenfels purchased the property after this plan was approved in 2012.
Were they present during the construction of the secondary structure?
I can't answer that one. That's a little specific.
Were, and it never came up to discuss the materials because I, only because I heard it's a completed building and there's an issue with that now? So I'm just curious, why did this happen three years ago?
We had a prior, the prior owner, we did have correspondence in the file from the prior owner, they had a different attorney at the time. And, you know, we had emails from the prior owner saying the plans were okay. And so now we have new owners and we're here.
Good question.
Okay, I think Art has a question.
Yeah, I have a question. It's actually from Mr. Wilkenfeld. I heard you say that you considered the plans that have been provided by the applicant for the review by neighbors to be inadequate. Inadequate in what way?
To be received and then something similar to a second one?
I'm sorry.
Can you make it a little louder, please?
As far as the elevations of their plan, they provided are very similar to the ones that they showed you, that little small sheet, which say a quarter inch equals a foot, but if that was true, their house would be about 10 feet long. So it's not possible to verify the measurements that they provided. And the last time that we had asked to verify when we saw the original plans, where they're saying are pretty much the same as the ones that are now, the structure was considered to be somewhere around 5,500 square feet. So I'm not sure where the change has happened, but we can't verify any of those claims that it's now 3,973 or something like that because we can't actually see that.
Because the requirement for the planning board, the requirement for the planning board is in fact, plans at a quarter inch equals a foot with respect to both building floor plan and building elevations.
But I got something this big, so there's no way that was correct.
Yeah, I mean, that is the, the planning board requirement. So I believe the planning board requirement has been satisfied.
The other thing as long as I'm up here, I wanted to mention was there's been a lot of conversation about the materials on the outside somehow not complying to the deed restrictions and that's, that may be true. But the actual structure of the house, I've never seen a colonial or traditional house in this sort of V-shaped wing. That's a much more of a modern building. The only reason I bring it up, obviously, you can't restrict those, but you're being offered a site plan that as far as we can tell, has not been approved and will not be approved because I can't even approve that. That's against the deed restrictions themselves. Those aren't something that I can review. The review is simply over the way that it fits into the environment and its aesthetic. But the actual deed restrictions restrict the style of house. And the reason for that has to do with the view from the original owners and what it looks like and how long it is. And it's actually at this point about the length of the Rhinebeck motel. So that's our concern is that it's because of the style, because of the type of house that's being proposed, it is now extended into a much more massive structure than was originally intended by the deed restrictions. So that's why I'm mentioning it just-
So this is a-
Thank you.
This is a reduced drawing.
It's a reduced drawing.
Reduced drawing.
This is precisely why we don't want the planning board to get involved in the neighbor dispute because-
But the planning board does require this at a quarter scale submitted.
Right, and we can, we can make a bigger submission as a condition of approval if that's necessary for the file.
No, additional, additional information on pending applications has to be, has to be submitted to the board.
Oh, not, it would be the same information just-
Two weeks, two weeks before the meeting, which means it could be, if it's submitted by December 4th, it could be considered by the planning board on December 18th. Again, the same rules apply to everybody.
I wasn't saying additional, I was just saying we could provide that exact plan at a larger scale if that's what you're looking for.
By December 4th, if you want it considered on December 18th.
Now, as far as the neighbors go, they can, those plans are available to them at any time.
The plans are available to them and the planning board attorney, planning board attorney has advised the planning board that it's none of the planning board's business.
Correct.
No, we require the quarter inch. They don't, they're not required to give you full-scale drawings, but they're available to you.
Right, you have the right to come and look at the files we have here. Anything we have here, you can look at.
I get the little mini picture.
Yeah. So anything that we have here in the file is open, it's, you know, public. And you can look at anything like that. Anything more?
Do you want to go over the architecture and its traditional and how it fits with the zoning code?
Yeah.
The standards and the zoning code?
Sure.
I think with respect to the issue-
Before you go into that, there was a distinction, and I realize that this is not something that we have, but I heard two different things and I just want to be sure I understand. One, we were talking about traditional materials and you emphasized that, that you had moved to more traditional materials. But then I was hearing that the restrictions have to do with traditional or colonial design, which in my mind goes toward architecture, not necessarily materials. Am I understanding that correctly? The language is to do with design as opposed to materials.
May I just read the paragraph?
Sure.
It's fairly short. Okay, so this is the paragraph in the deed restrictions, which is paragraph 5D. And it states that "Any new structure shall be of traditional or colonial design, and the color of the exterior of said structure shall, to the extent possible, be of white, gray, neutral, or earth tones consistent with the rural, cultural, and natural characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood." So the materials, the colors, the render that you have-
So they're both covered.
I'm sorry.
They're both covered.
They're both covered.
But it does specifically speak to traditional or colonial.
Or colonial.
And then to speak to colonial, and just without getting too far into the definition of what a colonial home is, three of the most distinguishing features of a colonial home are overhangs or covered porches, which you see in that drawing, gable ends of traditional roof lines and pitches, and windows that are of a colonial nature, divided panes, things like that. And that's what you're looking at in that plan. So we believe not only is it of colonial architecture, and this is something we have to work out with the neighbors, but it also meets the definition of traditional and the materials are in keeping with the spirit of the deed restriction. And, and again, this is, this architecture is based on an inspiration house that the Tualos found many years ago before even coming to see us at the art building. And that inspiration house was presented to the neighbors back when we revised the site plan as well because they did their diligence and checked with the neighbors to make sure what they intended to build would be allowed. And as Victoria said, here we are again with new neighbors, but we believe it's going to get through the deed restrictions just fine. And the Tualos just frankly want to move out of their 900 square foot guest cottage with their family of four and get into this house that they always intended to build and has always been on the site plans that we've brought to you.
Thank you. I believe there was someone in the back who'd like to say something.
Gary Lockman. Could you come up to the microphone?
That way we'll make sure we, we have you in perpetuity.
We live at 20 Hagerty Hill Road. We are not a party to these deed restrictions. We are, however, an adjoining neighbor. There are certainly indications that construction of a second residence on this property may be significantly delayed and perhaps indefinitely delayed. There are apparently, as we've heard already, disputes over some of the ground rules governing any mediation, negotiation, or arbitration process. And there are also some issues that may be subject only to litigation, not to mediation or arbitration. If litigation is involved, it could easily take a year. If appeals are involved, it could take still longer. The parties are not involved, are not in agreement on significant issues of design. I think we've heard tonight that the changes in design that may be required are considerably more than the tweaking that was alluded to by the applicant. But the position, the situation is that no one is in a position to guarantee that anything like this structure is going to emerge from the review process. There is no way of producing a site plan at this point prior to a review process that bears any necessary resemblance to what will actually be constructed. So this has all the ingredients of something that could drag on for years. Or the applicants could find this long delay unacceptable and sell the property and perhaps sell it to someone who has no interest in building a second residence on it. If that happens, the planning board, the building department, the ZBA, may never see the individual that buys the property. Our interest from the very beginning of this was and still is to ensure that we would not have a property adjoining ours with zoning issues. We did not oppose the application when it first became, came before the board in October of 2014 because the order in which the two proposed structures were constructed did not matter to us. As long as when all the dust settled, we ended up with a property that had no zoning issues. We took comfort when the builder committed to the board that the construction of the two residences would proceed more or less simultaneously. And we took still more comfort from the board when it stated that if at the time the CO for the existing structure was issued and there was still no second residence on the property, it would be, the CO would be issued as a primary residence. And understand that that did not occur. The CO for the existing residence was issued as an accessory dwelling, not primary. Three years later, we're back with the original issue, a special permit for an accessory dwelling. But the second residence is now mired in a dispute over deed restrictions and may remain there for a while. Deed restrictions were something we were not even aware of back in October of 2014 and we're now faced with very different circumstances. The property already has a zoning issue. It's got a CO for an accessory dwelling with no special permit and nothing for it to be accessory to. accessory to. Everyone seems to agree that approving accessory dwelling status for a residence on a property with no primary dwelling is a violation of the zoning law. Approving the current application supplies the special permit, but it still leaves the accessory to nothing issue in place, and that's going to be a tough one for the ZBA to handle. What kind of a variance could be applied for? The ZBA itself cannot make a circle square. We're not happy with accepting the existing status quo of basically limbo for a protracted period, but we'll live with it as long as we believe the things will work out in the end. But we are, we now see the possibility of things never working out if the property is sold to someone who has no interest in building a second residence. We see no path at that point to resolve the issue of having a CO which is out of sync with a, a property on which there is no primary residence. The approach that was laid out by the board in October two thousand and fourteen seems to me a very reasonable path forward. Deny the application, reclassify the existing residence as a primary residence. This step and only this step will conform the legal status of the property with the actual current situation on the ground, and if nothing ever happens in the future, the property will have no zoning issues. When and if the deed restriction issues have been sorted out by whatever means and the applicants are legally in a position to build a second residence, they can petition the board for a swap in designations. Assuming that the existing residence complies with the zoning law for accessory dwellings, this would eliminate any zoning issues, and we would not oppose it, just as we didn't oppose the application when it was made back in October of two thousand and fourteen. This seems an eminently reasonable solution to the problem, and the applicant should not view this as either unfair or unexpected because it was exactly what was so clearly laid out two and a, three-plus years ago at this point. But I fear that if the application is approved now, the result may be that we will put exactly what we were concerned with with the start, that we are going to have an adjoining property with a zoning issue and no way of fixing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you, could you give a, could you give a copy of that to Gretchen of your remarks? Just, we have it in the record. Thank you.
My question is very simple. What impact does the fact that it has a zoning issue have on you?
We went through this when we sold our property on Howell Road in the town of Cleveland, and we have a zoning issue next to us. At some cost and a paramount effort, we had it cleared, but when we went to sell the property, there was a little box that had to be checked on the sales form saying, "Are you aware of any zoning violations on adjoining properties?" We were able to say, "No, we couldn't." But no matter what, I don't know if we're ever going to sell this property. The point is that having a zoning violation on an adjoining property is never a plus. It's always a negative.
Well, it also could be insignificant, but your feeling is the sale of the property, and I don't disagree with you, and I agree with you what you said earlier, that I believe back in two thousand and fourteen, they were supposed to, it was supposed to be a continuous project, not, we're not going to give you a CO. They were going to give them a CO, but they wanted that project to be continuous. It wasn't supposed to stall, but like I said earlier, if it did stall, that would become the primary residence, so it didn't happen. So now we can delay it for a couple more months and make them go through the process and, you know, a zoning variant to turn it back and forth, or we can just move forward.
The other issue is, one of the reasons that Rhinebeck and the town of Rhinebeck is what it is, is that it's got a good zoning law. We'd like to see it maintained. It's just kind of a general principle. It's a decent law, it's got a good infrastructure around it, it's good to maintain the character of this town and the property throughout the town. It deserves to be defended.
I agree, and everyone knows here that every month we have something that comes up, like someone made a mistake, and we deal with it and try our best to move forward so everyone's happy.
We give it our best shot. Is there anything else anyone wishes to say?
Can I just say a couple of last words, please?
Well, I guess you could, yeah.
I won't go into the, the sequencing of the, the guest cottage and the main house. I think John Lyons has weighed in on that, and, you know, enough said about that. I'm not certainly the expert in that subject. I just want to address the point of more or less simultaneously, because I'm the builder who stated that this would be built as a site plan as presented, and we would be building more or less simultaneously or after the cottage was done, which is what I represented, and my clients could move in to watch their home being constructed. The plan was to move into the home. And you know what happened? They couldn't sell their home in Brooklyn. So, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, they couldn't sell their home in Brooklyn. I've had difficulty selling homes before. I've had great luck selling homes before, you know, the money for this home was coming from a home that had difficulty being sold in Brooklyn because of an issue outside of their control. And, you know, I apologize, but that sometimes happens. We see it a lot in this business. And to the point of this may never get constructed, may never be constructed, the reason we're back here is because we submitted a building permit application. We didn't ask to come back to the planning board for any fun reason. We submitted a building permit application and found out that there was a technical issue with the fire map, and we had to come back here to get the same plan reaproved. So if it had not been for the map signing, we'd have a building permit in hand, we'd probably have a CO in hand by now because Mr. Tualas and his family have already given us a deposit, and in fact, we've already built a lot of the infrastructure to serve that house. Had any of us thought, you know, me as his, his builder or he as the client, that this was going to take this long, we wouldn't have put that much money in the ground just to let it sit there. There's plenty of things we could have left out, but the infrastructure's there for that house and it's waiting to be used, and trust me, I've been over to their house for dinner, they're waiting to move into that house. So I just wanted to address that and, and, you know, to clear up that, you know, this wasn't sort of, hey, we'll promise one thing and deliver another, but, you know, it is circumstances, and it is a building permit that is sitting downstairs that started this whole process. And, you know, I understand we need to provide another drawing, but had we gotten approved tonight, the plan would be to run back in with another building permit application, which by the way, would show the square footage that complies with the deed restriction because none of us are stupid enough to put through a building permit application that doesn't comply with a deed restriction because that's public record. You guys are going to pick that up and say, "Look at this, you violated the deed restriction" the second we get that building permit. So the, the experts downstairs, Michael now and, and Ed, will figure out what the square footage is, they'll figure out what the height is, the planning board can tell us that this is in the right spot with respect to the deed restrictions. So your job is pretty easy. You get to approve the architecture or not, but we get to have a conversation about it. Not these folks, they don't need to hear all this back and forth. So I just wanted to clear the air on that. I'm glad you brought these things up again, Mr. Lockman, because I don't feel like I got to clear the air on those issues last time around. So thank you.
Thank you. What I'd like to do now, if the planning board's in agreement, is to continue this public hearing to the eighteenth, and at the same time to authorize ARP to draft possible resolutions of approval. I think we want some time to look over, you know, the new submissions, to make sure we've seen them, make sure everything is still basically in compliance with what we've had before. If there's anything else anyone else would care to bring to our attention, certainly the next couple of weeks is the time to do it, but I think that we're really getting to the point where I think we need to, to move ahead with this. So that's, yes, Victoria?
As far as seeker, we asked the board if we were prior speaker determination.
That would be part of, of what ARP would be drafting for us, yes.
Technically, it's not even required, it's a type two.
Right, it's a type two action.
But we will, but we will.
Yeah. Well, I know Darren said he did not see this as fun coming back here, so we don't want to make it any more difficult for him than it has been. That's, I don't, I don't, I don't get offended. So if this is agreeable, could I hear a motion from the planning board? Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope. December eighteenth, six thirty-five.
December eighteenth at six thirty-five, it'll be. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So as I say, if there's anything else anyone wishes to submit, please do so in the interim period. We will be looking over it, and public hearing for any further comment will be on the eighteenth. And with any luck, we will be able to move forward with this. And I thank you all for being here. Okay. The next one's an easy one. Our next public hearing, Margot Doherty, this was at twenty-five Kelly Street. She has requested that we put off her public hearing until, I believe it's.
It is in February.
In February. We have, she has not done the, the noticing or anything like that. She spoke to me about it. She'd like to wait because she doesn't really want to have to do the building and get the building permit and all at this point. So I don't know that the planning board needs to take any action on that.
Yeah, you do. You'd, you'd actually scheduled this hearing for this evening, so you should take, have a motion, rescheduling this hearing for whatever the meeting date is.
Okay. That's subject to the applicant meeting, the necessary noticing requirements, which I know that Gretchen's going to help her with. Okay. Could I hear?
If you don't, you're, you're running into a time box.
Okay. Then we shan't do that. Could I hear a motion of that effect?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
And the time will be for the public hearing on?
She can be the first hearing that night, whatever that date is.
All right.
And Gretchen can fill in whatever the date is.
And she'll be informing her.
There's two in February.
Yes, the first meeting.
And Gretchen will be informing her well in advance of the notification requirements to get done. Okay. Have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any second? Any of both? Okay, that's good. All business, Mr. Horstman has also requested that we postpone any further action on his application. He would like to do it, I believe, in January, Gretchen, was?
Uh, it's.
December.
December, I'm sorry, December.
Reschedule for December eighteenth at six forty.
Okay. At which time he will do the necessary of, get the noticing done properly in a timely manner. And since we didn't schedule a public hearing, I think we're just waiting on him for that.
No, you did.
No, we didn't schedule a public hearing, we just.
Yeah, you, you.
Did we? I don't think we ever scheduled it, did we?
No, at this minute.
Oh, it was not processed?
Right. It was never done.
So you need to schedule it?
Yeah. For December eighteenth at two thou, at.
Six forty.
Six forty. This is going down swimmingly. Okay.
Next one is Mr. Baker. You're going to add to the.
That's right. And I'm going to be recusing myself. Melody's going to handle this.
This is in reference to the application from Jeff Baker at Sutasko. The original application had to do with the creation of a beach on the property.
What happened during papers?
And the notice called a stop work order was put in place because of the signature removal of trees.
Thank you.
And the remediation plan was asked for, and the stop work order has now been lifted because the remediation plan was passed for the viewpoint of trees. Correct me, Ryan, were you guys involved in that at all? Was the CAB involved in that remediation plan?
No.
Okay. So remediation plan was submitted, has been reviewed and accepted by the CEO. So the stop work order was lifted and the notice of violation was simultaneously lifted. So we're asking for a continuation of that public hearing to be scheduled on December eighteenth.
There was a second part of that stop work order also that related to the removal of some equipment or something that was owned by another party that was on the property.
The portion of the property has been used.
And that, and that, and that has been, that, that, that aspect has been resolved also.
The equipment, the, the non-agricultural equipment has been removed from the property. So Mr. Baker has complied with the things that were put in place by the stop work orders and the notice of violation. So we are now able to move forward on this application for the construction of the beach. And we're, I'm looking for a motion to continue that public hearing on December eighteenth.
One question before we do that. Wasn't there an issue about how much removal was, I mean, the plan said something and called, and what they delineated was?
Distance off the shore.
Yeah. There was an issue about how much excavation was going to go on.
It was limited to forty feet, but whatever they had on the drawings appeared to be much more than that.
Well, I think that will be clarified when they come back in for the public hearing.
Okay, so that's an issue for the.
The reason we suspended the public hearing was because of the stop work order and the notice of violation.
And there were also questions around the, the dumping site, but I thought that was approved by the Army Corps, whatever, where they're going to take.
DEC approved the disposal site or waste, waste disposal site or whatever you want to call it.
So it's. So we have no, we don't weigh in on, on our, we don't get to disapprove of what the DEC approves of?
No. But we're just taking up where we left off in terms of our review prior to the stop work. So could I enter to the motion for continuation of the public hearing on December eighteenth or whatever.
Six forty-five.
Six forty.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Second, second.
Chairs are not comfortable.
Okay.
Benefit of being.
So, Michael, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Are you recusing yourself because you're acting as?
I'm recusing myself because I was involved in an enforcement issue.
So whenever you act as the, you're.
Well, if it comes before the planning board, if it comes before the CEO, just to see, it's an application, just to see if it meets basically the use regulations and the area and bulk regulations, that's pretty simple. But if it's in, anything to do with enforcement, I believe that I should, and in this case, I should just step aside. I didn't do the stop work order or the lifting or the notice of violation, but I did lift them. Ron had already looked through it and he was going to do that, but he didn't. And so I did it, and I felt since it was part of an enforcement activity, I shouldn't participate in the review of the application. So, and I'm hoping that we're going to get someone new to do this on a permanent basis very shortly.
Is that going to happen soon?
I would love it to happen as a Christmas present. If not before, maybe, maybe a turkey, yeah. More like a turkey, but anyway, we're, we're hoping we have some candidates and hopefully we'll be able to get it done. So, all righty. Next thing we have, Ferncliff Forest, sixty-eight Mount Rutson Road, wetlands permit and site plan approval. Sketch plan conference with planning board and initial presentation of amended application for site plan approval under Town Code Chapter one-two-five zoning, and application for wetland permit under Town Code Chapter one-twenty wetlands in the matter for post-construction of an eight-hundred-and-fifteen-square-foot covered pavilion within the Land Conservation District, Towns WRA. The proposed location modified to, in terms of its location, within regulated wetland buffer since prior grant of site plan approval on July seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen. My understanding is the change is to try to reduce the number of trees that have to be removed.
Yes, when I told the board trustees that the CAC recommended that we not disturb any trees or roots as possible, the trustees decided to ask to move it into the buffer area where no trees would be involved, and I think that they felt that we had cut enough trees to fix the pond that we didn't want to cut anymore. So that's the motivation, and Warren can show you where it's going to go.
Do you recall from six or seven or eight months ago, where your planning board also visited the site and had some concerns about the proposed location of the pavilion, which again, as Nick just said, was located to avoid the spoils deposit area from the previous pond dredging, but also to sit just outside the wetland buffer? And that sort of forced it fairly far down the trail toward the end of the pond in a wooded area. And so both the Conservation Advisory Board and the planning board, you know, were concerned about some large trees, and we decided that after thinking about both that issue and also similarly the utility of the pavilion much closer to the little information kiosk and the sort of entry up from the parking area that this would give people a better view of the pond, and so it was worth coming back and requesting the location within the wetland buffer, but still outside the spoils deposit area. It's right along the path, so it's very easy access. There's a stone wall, existing stone wall between the path to the pavilion and the pond, and actually the level is quite, the grade is quite level between the pavilion and this point. There's no drop off to the pond. There are a couple of boulders we've located there. If you've been up there, you'll kind of recall those boulders. But we don't feel there's any risk of anything washing either during construction or during use down into the pond from the pavilion. We think it's a pretty safe place to locate it, but because it's the buffer, obviously we have to come back for amended site plan approval here. No changes to the structure otherwise or any of the plans, use of the structure, it's simply relocating it.
Same slab on grade construction?
Yes.
Other questions from the planning board?
Why not float it on the pond?
Hey! Talking about a little boathouse.
Yeah, yeah.
No boats allowed.
Oh, good point, good point, good point. I think it's a good idea, personally, but it's just personal opinion.
Anything else? I have a procedural resolution, I'll just hit the high points. We are going to accept the application as presented. We're classifying it as an unlisted action under seeker. We will schedule the public hearing for December 18th, 2017 at?
6:50.
6:50. And who would like to go up to Ferncliff Forest?
I know how to get there.
Richard and Eric?
Do you have to go again?
Yeah, sure, it's a whole different states.
And you'll, and you'll get together with Warren about, about the, you know, scheduling the site visit?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. We are going to refer to the Conservation Advisory Board for their review, and to the Waterfront Advisory Committee for their review. And we're going to authorize the town planning consultant, without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise on the basis of both the above cited field visit and referral to prepare recurring drafts of an EAF Part Two, both seeker and approval resolutions for the planning board's consideration on December 18th, or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So we'll see you on the 18th.
Yeah. Thank you.
Happy turkey.
Warren has next Thursday for a, or this coming Thursday for a site visit.
You can change a few turkeys around.
Yeah, that's right.
You provide the dinner.
Thank you.
Okay. We have two more items. One is a request for a time extension for John Lyons for his home occupation. The draft resolution I have here is, upon timely request of Kim Garrison, attorney on behalf of John Lyons applicant, the planning board hereby extends from December 19th, 2017, to December 19th, 2018, the deadline for satisfaction of conditions and/or requirements set forth within the planning board's special permit use and site plan approval resolution of June 19th, 2017, in the matter of the applicant's proposed Class II home occupation at 224 Morton Road. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And we have one referral from the ZBA.
Actually, you have two.
We do.
Yeah, there's another one dealt with in my meeting notes.
Oh.
The first application is the one that's on the agenda, and I think there's a correction in my draft resolution on these two. The first, the application by the Beasers, side and front setbacks to authorize a screen porch addition on an existing residence. No planning or, some planning or environmental issues involved in this particular case. The second is an application by Garden Homes Management to replace an existing mobile home with a newer unit. There don't appear to be any issues involved, but there's a mistake in my draft resolution. This is in the neighborhood residential district, and it's comparable to the case that you just had on Post Road, where replacement of a unit in a neighborhood residential district is subject to, was it special, was site planned by the planning board?
I think so.
So in the draft resolution, we can discuss these, but the draft resolution would be corrected. It has not anticipated any planning board approval required for the Beaser application, but site plan review is required for the Garden Homes Management application.
And my understanding?
CE wants to know what planning board approvals might be required after their action.
And apparently, there is some, some issues being raised by some of the neighbors of the, of the mobile home park.
They want the colonial style?
Well, there's some encroachment issues. The issue, which I, which I don't, I believe DC has already resolved it, but I know it's been brought up again. As you recall, a few years ago, you may have read in the paper about the sewage outflow from the sewage disposal system for the mobile home park was going onto another gentleman's property. And he once again is concerned that it's somehow not doing any good to his property. I don't know how the ZBA is going to handle these issues. I would imagine, when they come in for site plan, for us, it's going to be brought up again. We're going to hear it again.
Yeah. And it's germane to site plan review.
Yeah, it is.
Didn't be adjourned, adjoining property owner sued?
I think he did, and lost. I believe so. Yes, I believe so. But I think it's being brought up again. Yes. The DC had approved it.
Are we using the encroachment as an excuse to make them fix the septic system?
No, 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 not at all. We don't, not even to fix the septic system. DC has approved it. It was challenged in court, and the, and the mobile home park won. So I'm just saying, it's going to come up again before us. It's going to be at the public hearing. It's going to be mentioned. I'm not saying that there's anything we need to do about it, just that that may be discussed.
But how big is the setback variance that they're looking for on this one?
I?
Three feet?
It's, it's?
It's down to, it basically is down to three feet.
Yeah. Because basically, the setbacks are almost three feet. I mean, it's just so packed.
Right, but they're already pretty close.
They're pretty close. There are some encroachments, they're putting in somewhat smaller units, because the big units were encroaching on neighboring property, for example.
You can see the size of this proposed unit, it's small units, 13 by 36.
Yeah.
Which is neck typical 60 or 70.
Yeah. So it's, it's, you know, issues such as that that we'll hear. From my looking at it, I didn't see any reason why we wouldn't just tell the ZBA to use their own, you know, judgment on, on this. And certainly, the Beaser, the Beaser thing is just, you know, that's?
But in this particular case, you know, you need to advise the ZBA that site plan review and approval were required for the Garden Homes application, which frankly, the ZBA will probably appreciate, because that allows them to dump the sewage question if it gets raised on you, as not being one germane to their, their variance consideration.
Right. So without further ado, could I hear a motion to approve the resolution Art has planned? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, that wraps up what I had. Anyone else?
Can I make a motion?
Anyone want to share recipes for Thanksgiving? Anything like that?
The only thing I would suggest that, as members of the planning board, if you've got the planning association's flyer that came in the mail, read that article, it's on the cover. It's quite interesting. What's it about? A variance that was disapproved and then went to court, and the court said goodbye. And it's, it has to do with noise.
Okay.
Local? Or just an interesting New York State? Well, it's, it's interesting, but it could, it's applicable to local situations that are currently going on.
Thank you. Well, hearing nothing further, could I hear a motion to adjourn?
Emotes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.